Good evening. I'd like to call or order the Merrimack School District, SAU 26, school board member for June 20th, 2022. Will everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) We want to welcome everyone to our board meeting tonight, and we want to open it up
to public participation. If you are here to participate in public, we ask that you come to the mic and state your name and address. If you are a student, you only need to state your name and that you are a student, there's no reason to state your address. So I open the floor.
Hi, good evening. Heather Robitaille, 45 Springfield Circle. First, since we are at the end of this school year, I just wanted to take a moment to appreciate and thank all of our district's amazing staff, our educators, all the personnel that made this tumultuous year possible. I'd like to thank the board and our previous board members that aren't with us tonight for all of the work that they put in for our community, for our district. I know it hasn't been easy. I know it's a lot. There've been a lot of long hours, both at the school and school board, but it's appreciated. And as a parent, thank you. Thank you to you all for what you've done for our children and for our community. I'd just also like to bring up with the discipline policy on the agenda tonight. As a parent, I would just like to hear some more of, hopefully some discussion around what's behind the lack of appeal process for parents. It seems like there's a legal ramification there that Mr. Olson had mentioned in the materials for this evening, as well as what is in place in this policy to protect the rights of students who are accused and have discipline needs, and also for students who may have been victims of situations in school that might make them potentially feel unsafe, which we certainly don't want to see in this school or anywhere. I appreciate that it is a very complex issue and that we certainly can't anticipate every situation, but as a parent, I would like to hear more, hopefully tonight, on what the thought process is behind all those issues. So thank you.
Seeing no one else coming to the mic, we will move on to recognitions.
We have no recognitions this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to informational updates, superintendent update.
I want to thank Steve Clare, Peep Arjron, Rich Zampieri, Deb Barker, and others at the high school who planned and implemented just a wonderful graduation. It was one of the nicest graduations I think I've ever attended. I want to thank the students also for their extraordinarily respectful behavior. You know, we're in good hands in the future with young adults who conduct themselves in that manner, and everything was just perfect. It was the first time, you know, in my former school district, it was non-negotiable in terms of beach balls, but it was wonderful to see the colorful beach balls, I have to tell you, being thrown up in the air at the end. It was just a terrific graduation. So congratulations to all involved, the students, the staff. Parents were wonderful, and it was a great, great day. I want to thank certainly the staff, all of our staff, every single one of them, because everyone matters, everyone counts, our families and the students, for what I think has been a very successful year. Yes, we've had ups and downs, to mask, not to mask, I mean everywhere in between, other mitigating issues and strategies, but everyone held together and everyone stayed focused on students, which is so essential to a quality school system. I also want to thank all of you, and that includes Cindy Raliemi and Shannon Barnes, and all of you for the support that you have given the students and the staff of the school system, the support that you've given Kim and Matt, Melissa, and myself in the central office, because it is very much appreciated. We look at working with you as a team approach, and I think great things happen when we work together like that. So just know how much it's been appreciated. I want to just recognize that Sue Bradford, a teacher at Master Coral Elementary School, has moved forward to the second round for the New Hampshire Teacher of the Year. I want to also recognize a group of people who have been very important in our school system. You know, some of the unsung heroes, and they oftentimes don't get mentioned, and I don't mean to offend anyone else by not mentioning a particular group or person, but we have floating subs who work four days a week and are at it day in and day out, are flexible in terms of their assignments, never knowing quite honestly where they're going to be. And I just want to mention Irene Count, who I know has been here for a number of years, Brian McKenna, Tom Prentice, Deanna Pearson, Tracy Borghardt, Devin Crowley, Cara Crowley, Carrie Byers, Sarah Pearson, Melissa Dalton, Giselle Mendy, Charlotte Gill, Joanna Esterling, Cassidy Downs, Frank Bishop. I worked with Frank in Westford for over 25 years. Deborah Holman, Dawn McGee, Jennifer Lane, Beth Ferguson. Thank you very much for everything you do for our school system and for the kids, day in and day out. Because you know, the standard answer of students, when a substitute teacher comes in and says, "Okay, let's take out your books or your texts," and their standard answer is, "Well, our teacher said we didn't have to do anything today." But these people are well-trained, they're assigned to a particular building, they know the routine, and they've done a great, great job. I want to congratulate also Director of Wellness Fern Sidon. Fern was this year's Honored Recipient of the NAMI, the National Alliance for Mental Health, and let's see, she is the Educator of the Year. She was recognized for her tireless work in bringing parents and community partners together to grow and educate around mental health awareness. Additionally, she continues to spread the message that families are not alone, and that help is available. Congratulations to Fern. Fern is everywhere in our school system, helping us on a daily basis, weekly basis, monthly basis throughout the entire year on issues of social, emotional well-being and development, and is an invaluable resource to us. Last, I would like to recognize a person to my left who has been such an extraordinary contributor to this school system for so many years. You know, this unfortunately is Kim's last meeting with us, and I can't tell you how much progress we have made this year with Kim in the role of Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. She is consummate professional, always conducting herself with great integrity, honesty, and 10,000% focused on children, and has brought us to a greater level of curriculum planning, professional development, implementation of different instructional strategies. So Kim, I can't thank you enough, and she knows how much I'm going to miss working with her, because you know, some people that you feel comfortable with from day one, and Kim was one of those people, and she has been a treasure to this school district for over, what, 17, over 17 years? 17 years. And just know how much we're all going to miss you. And that is it.
Any comments?
Of course I have a comment. So my first administrator that I ever had the pleasure of encountering when my oldest started school was Kim. I don't think, I can't remember if, no, you were principal at the time. And my, I didn't thankfully have a lot of interaction with you, which means I think my kid was pretty well behaved. But I do remember that was during the time when we were going to go to China for like three weeks with my second grader, and I remember going to you and being really concerned, like, is this a good idea to do this? Should we take him or whatever? And I remember, you know, as a new mom, you know, first time mom, you were just so like, this is a huge educational opportunity, you should take him and you should not worry about second grade. Those were not your exact words. But you encouraged me to take him, you told me that you guys would be behind me and work with me to make sure everything was on track. And for me, that was really meaningful, and everything I've ever heard about you as an administrator has tracked with that exact thing, that you listen to parents, you understand parents, and then you work towards solutions. And to me, that's everything that an administrator needs to do, and you always did that really well. But I also have the pleasure of knowing some people outside of this town who see you in a professional capacity and not in a parent capacity, and your reputation is stellar. They speak so highly of you, and we have been so blessed to have all of that experience and expertise and hard work, and I am truly, truly grateful for all of the years you've given to Merrimack, and I just wish you all the best.
And we haven't had much opportunity to work with each other, but just when I got here and I was talking to some of my colleagues and I said, "Yeah, Merrimack School Board," they said, "Oh, that's where Kim and Yarla works, isn't that?" And so exactly what Jenna just said, your reputation's definitely out there, and it's nothing but great from the folks I've talked to, so we're going to miss you.
And I remember when we interviewed you last year, and I just was amazed by your vision, by your goals, the things you knew that had gone well, the things that could be improved, and the amount of those that you've accomplished this year has just been outstanding. And I've enjoyed working with you, I've enjoyed getting to know you, and we're going to miss you, but we do, we wish you all the best.
And then finally, you know, when you left Reed's Ferry, I know people at Reed's Ferry were really afraid of what that school was going to be like, but because you developed those systems and you did such hard work there, Reed's Ferry was able to continue your work. And I think you do have great integrity, you have great vision, you're exceptional at your job, and I want you to know that, you know, we're excited for you to have this next opportunity, but you know, opportunities just keep presenting themselves, so keep all your doors open in the future.
And we're sorry, we've just left you with now it's your turn for your informational update.
Well, it's definitely an evening of, you know, grace and thanks, and I just want to thank the board for giving me this opportunity. I have loved the job. I've absolutely loved it. I was nervous coming into it, but I have loved it so much. I love the creativity and the freedom that I have and the things that I've been allowed to do that have just helped to move the district forward. And I also just want to thank the community. It's been, you know, there's a lot that we've been through since 2005, and whether it was as an assistant principal or a principal, and now assistant superintendent, people have just been wonderful. You know, it goes both ways. In the community, the parents have been wonderful, the students are just mean so much to me, and somebody had asked me what I was going to miss most about this job, and it was definitely the notion of when I walk through schools, you know, the teachers know me and the students know me, I have to apologize because I was at the middle school and I interrupted a Spanish class to say hi to kids, and everybody, all the kids just went wild. But it's nice recognizing them, it's nice seeing the graduates of Reed's Ferry School at graduation. So that's what I'm going to miss most, that's all the relationships. So I do want to say that I've put together a nice transition plan for the future Assistant Superintendent, and our goals for the summer will be working in four content areas, it will be working in ELA. We're going to set up a plan, a year-long plan to do curriculum mapping, K through 12, in the area of English Language Arts. And we are putting our math committee together to just look at some of our assessment tools that we're using and make sure there's alignment among the three lower elementary schools in terms of the assessments. Science and Social Studies will be continuing to update via the EduPlan at 21 and get that curriculum online. So there's a group of staff members who have been willing to come forward and do some summer hours, and we've found the funding for that. So we have some good plans in place to keep the momentum going, and I'm confident that it will continue to happen. So thank you very much.
Assistant Superintendent for Business update, Matt.
Well, after all that was said, to follow that with anything insightful or meaningful or whatever, I just want to say it's been a pleasure working with Kim ever since she got here, and she thinks I know that I enjoy her work ethic, her company, her sense of humor, and she will be missed in central office, and she will be missed in this school district and the community. Aside from that, this summer, we're going to be moving a bunch of dirt around, and we have a roof to do with Thornton's Ferry, and we have a ventilation project to finally finish off, but it doesn't hold a candle to the loss of Kim going to another district. Concord is very fortunate to have her, and I wish her well. Thank you.
May I make one final comment also, that the Department of Education has just notified us, another school system, that the Joint Legislative Fiscal Committee on Friday voted to appropriate $10 million to school systems across the state for school security. So Matt and I will be meeting to discuss what we might be interested in doing and how much we might be interested in applying for from the state.
All right, moving on to school board update.
So our goals meeting is June 28th, starting at 9:00 AM at the middle school. It is open to the public. We have received an agenda from Primax, and we're excited to have the first school board goals meeting. I will be needing automated caption, just so everyone's aware. Graduation, as Bill said, was perfect. It's, for graduation to happen and to be so well-planned takes so much time, and it really was just a dignified graduation, and parents that I talked to were really, really ecstatic and very appreciative of the work of the administration to have that graduation. And finally, the school board and the school district will be doing the Fourth of July Parade. It will be a school district parade with the Budget Committee and the Building and Planning Committee and the school board. And I did order t-shirts, and I put the Budget Committee in red. I hope that's okay. Just as a joke.
I don't think the Budget Committee likes the color red, at least not when I present to them.
But anyway, so we're looking forward to the Fourth of July Parade, to see our community and thank our teachers and staff for all that they've done, all the hard work through the COVID years.
All right, and we do not have our student representative updated, she is excused.
She's excused.
All right, old business.
I just quickly mentioning the previous meeting, which I was not here for due to my own school obligations, when I went back to watch it, I was so upset that I missed what was, for me, up until this point, like, the best, most fun meeting ever, with the saxophone choir here and the presentations, and I was like, of course, the sax guy wasn't here for the saxophone choir, and I just want to make, put it on record how just impressive and phenomenal they were. Actually, when I emailed Ms. Serenita and said, "I got to come and apologize to those kids for not being here," so I went down to see them on Thursday, just to say what a good job they did. So yeah, I was just so bummed out that I couldn't be here for that, but I'm sure this meeting will be just as exciting, for sure.
All right, moving on to new business, middle school student highlights.
Thank you for having us here. My name is Adam Carragher, in case you don't know, the principal over at the middle school. And we're going to kind of do a little bit of a rotating chair system, not quite as exciting as saxophones, but we're going to do our best to make it exciting for you. So thank you very much for inviting us to share a little bit about the 21-22 school year. This year, we have been working on a program that we have called the FLEX program for our students. We created it and implemented it about four years ago, and just to give you some of the basic nuts and bolts about the program and what it's there for and how it's leveraged and utilized is my part of this, and then you're going to hear a little bit more about the actual activities and the different things that students get to engage in. So first and foremost, our FLEX block was implemented as a means or an opportunity for us to provide interventions and extensions for all of our students throughout the day. This 30-minute block of time occurs three days a week, so it's not every day of the week, but three days of the week, and it allows for staff to provide different activities and engaging opportunities, as well as support for our students who may be struggling with different areas or different subjects or different ideas and concepts. So secondly, this was also put in place because our original schedule did not have band or chorus during the school day. It was something that actually occurred before school began. So by implementing this, we therefore created a block of time where we were able to have all of our band students, all of our chorus students participate in during school. Now granted, they still take advantage of some of the morning prior to school beginning, but from 7:30 to 8 o'clock during the school day, which we felt was a very important piece of our middle school experience, and we wanted to make sure that that piece of it was inclusive or included in our school day, because we felt that the schedule needed to be reflective of the idea that this is an important piece of what we provide for our students. So after a hiatus during the 2020-21 school year, we have re-implemented this program at Merrimack Middle School. So students ultimately have a choice of a variety of different activities that are provided by our staff, and every quarter, those activities, it's then surveyed, students are asked what they would like to participate in, and asked to rank the different activities, one to 10 or whatever the number of activities are. And we do our best to try to help kids get within their first three choices. It's not always perfect, I will tell you that. It is hard to find the first three choices for all of our students. So what oftentimes will end up happening is if, say for the first quarter, you didn't get the first three choices, you would be kind of set at the beginning of the line for the second quarter. So that way, you did have an opportunity to do one of those activities that you really wanted to be engaged in. So the other piece, of course, which is very important about this, is just that opportunity to be able to work with students who maybe had some challenges or were struggling with some concepts. It also has proven, and you're going to hear a little bit more about, just those kind of day-to-day needs, the idea of it being flexible was really a big piece of it. So if we had a student who was maybe out for a couple of days, maybe on a trip or sick or whatever it might be, there was already a block of time built into the school day for students to be able to access a little bit of extra help, as well as maybe make up some of the different things that they otherwise might not have an opportunity to make up. So, you know, here to tell you really kind of more about what it is and give a little bit of personal experience, and I apologize because I did not get them on the agenda, they're kind of a late addition for us. We invited Mr. James Costa, who is our digital learning specialist at the Merrimack Middle School, and also is our MMS TV facilitator, if you will. And then we also have Jocelyn Rootstein, who is one of our students who participates in the Merrimack TV, and you're going to see her in a video that we have created, but you also get to see her live and in person. So, and then to wrap us all up, we'll have Mrs. O'Brien, our interim Assistant Principal, come up and hopefully tie a nice little bow and have an opportunity for some questions. So, Mr. Costa, Jocelyn, come on up.
Hi, James Costa, Digital Learning Specialist. So just want to give you some context with MMS TV, so that's one of the FLEX activities that we have offered this year, and it's an idea that I've had for a while. I have sort of a production background, but with, you know, as a language arts teacher, it's just a different position with different times during the day, and this just opened me up to be a little bit more creative, this change in position. So I was actually able to put this into motion. I talked to Mr. Michael Shaughnessy up at the high school, and Nick LaValle has been awesome at Merrimack TV, and he actually just donated three iMac computers for editing purposes for, you know, next year and going forward, and hopefully we can even get students making, you know, content for Merrimack TV, or, you know, we're talking about that. But it's a long ways, but it's a, it was slow-going at first, and it was a lot of, you know, getting the students film, but then me having to edit it and chop it all up, which is definitely a process, but I love doing it. But it's, I'm proud of the video that we made to showcase all the FLEX video, all the FLEX activities because it was student-made, and that's, you know, that's what it's all about, and we're trying to get the students in, working with, you know, these digital tools and, you know, the new wave of technology and communication. So Jocelyn has been literally and figuratively our anchor. She has just took on this role and ran with it. She's such a presence in the school, and, you know, a lot of what we've been able to bring to students and, you know, about an episode a month, just highlighting Merrimack Middle School activities and culture, she's just been right at the center of it. So she's going to tell you a little bit about her experience with FLEX and MMS TV, and this is kind of an impromptu thing, she's, it's just been so great, and I was like, you know what, you want to come to the school board meeting? And of course, she said yes, so it's the kind of student she is, but yeah. Jocelyn.
Hi. So yeah, my experience has been doing-
Turn your mic on.
Push the button, there's a button. Okay. Hello. So in quarter two, when we got a little survey, I saw an MMS TV, and I'm like, oh my gosh, I've been waiting to do this, and I was so excited to be a part of it, and from the minute I started filming, I was like, oh yeah, I'm doing this. I'm doing this right now. And I've been having so much fun because I've been helping a lot, I've been part of it a lot, and I've just been, you know, there, but also helping at the same time. There has been times where I haven't been able to come, but since it's flexible, I've been able to get passes to get back to class if I need to get work done, so it's good to know that I can do plenty of things while outside the classroom and inside the classroom. And I've also been a part of editing with some stuff too, which is very fun to do. So yeah, that's basically it.
Yeah, our video will probably say everything we've said twice over, but it's a couple minutes long, but it's all mostly, I think, you know, I cut it all up at the end, but all students have made these, and really, you know, proud of it. So it'll be up there, sorry if you have to crane your neck.
Welcome to the MMS TV FLEX Posay special.
I'm Jocelyn.
And I'm Katie, and we're here representing MMS TV to show you what the middle school has been up to during our school's flex period.
Flex is a period in the mornings on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, where students can receive a variety of different educational experiences.
Some students stay on their teams and get extra support from their teachers. Other students get the opportunity to have band or chorus.
The rest of MMS students then sign up for different activities hosted by several unified arts teachers and other teachers around the building.
Keep watching to see what has been offered this past quarter.
I'm Jocelyn here with MMS TV, and today's flex activity that I'll be showing you is MMS Vloggers, hosted by Mr. Carragher and Ms. Diggs. Let's go.
I'm Katie with MMS TV, and now let's head down to the art room to check out embroidery with Ms. Roy. with Ms. Roy.
Welcome to today's talk stories. Yearing up for DC or hunkering doubt that it's staying here.
Also, back in game five, are the MMS Vloggers--
Hi, I'm Jocelyn here with MMS TV. And this is Miss--
A great opportunity for kids. They get to practice and learn a piece entirely on their own, solo.
Before we get to the others, let's throw it over to our sports reporter with a sports update.
With us coaches, and we've been doing this a long time. We love the sport.
Seven art students are learning how art can be used in--
So long, MMS.
So, hi there, Nicole O'Brien. And as you saw, that was just a small sample of the different activities that the students can choose from to participate in during that flex time. And you saw here Jocelyn, who is so passionate and excited about her work with the MMS TV. You know, that's what it's all about. When the students aren't getting the extra help that they need or the support that they need, they also get to explore those things that they're really passionate and excited for. So thank you guys so much for having us. Thank you to the MMS TV staff and Mr. Costa, Mr. Bike Two for putting together that excellent video along with the students in that flex block, and for Jocelyn for joining us this evening, and thank you.
Thank you.
Comments from the board?
I'll start. First of all, that was awesome. I loved that. Where was that when my kid was there? Well, I've had three kids go there, but two of them went through during COVID, which was like a semi-middle school experience, right? Like, we did the best we could, but sometimes they weren't in the building. So that's awesome. I love, I love, well, of course, I'm the S D L, right? Like, that's my job. That's what I do now. And just notice how you put so many different things in there, but also so many different things that kind of like made me think of mindfulness or peacefulness, or moments where kids can go and do something that they wouldn't ever normally do maybe in school, just have a quiet moment in the library or walk outside. That would have been transformational for a personal child that I know of in my family. You know, things like that, I think, are so huge, and I love that MMS TV idea. And I just think that the fact that you came up with so many varied things, it's almost like you really did try to think of any sort of thing that a middle school student might really feel engaged by and find somebody to facilitate that. And I hope that that continues to grow and thrive and you continue to expand it because I think it's really exciting.
I'm going to kind of echo Jenna. When you were first presenting before we watched the video, I wrote down what question was, what are the flex activities? And then the video had them all, which was awesome. But one of the things I noticed when I was watching the video was that it was a balanced variety between physical and creative and mental and quiet, and I really liked that, that there was kind of something for everyone. So that's awesome.
Yeah, and, you know, that's a huge part of middle school anyways. Where's your passion and discovering your passion? And there's so many opportunities in there to do that. So I think it's a really great usage of time. I do have a couple of questions. When a student, sorry, yeah. So you said a student makes, they choose, right? Are they locked into that choice for the year, for the semester, for the quarter?
So it's a quarterly basis.
Okay.
So like, for example, Jocelyn would have had to have put MMS TV as her top choice to continue in MMS TV, which I believe she did.
Well, yeah, yeah.
So we do, and so kids kind of rank things. Now, our band and chorus students, you know, that's kind of their passion. That's kind of, you know, that's kind of the thing that is their passion. So that's where we were able to, you know, kind of create that opportunity for them to be able to continue pursuing and doing that which they love as well.
Sure, and they do it very well.
And they do an incredible job.
So I guess, because that's where I was going, is that the only time those groups meet is during that flex time?
So that's the only time that the flex activities meet. Now, that doesn't mean that there's not other after-school opportunities or things that are along the same lines for, you know, like art clubs or different activities. So there is an opportunity to engage beyond just, beyond just the flex activity, if you will. But the flex block, you are correct. It's, that is one of the challenges that we face is there's, I guess, a somewhat limiting factor in terms of if you choose to do band and chorus, then those are your flex activities for, you know, for the duration.
Sure. And my concern, coming from a district that had something similar to this, is one of the struggles we faced was so-and-so can't come to rehearsal today because they need to make up a math test during, we called it something else, but flex time or something like that, which of course, you know, band and chorus are one of the few classes who regularly have to demonstrate proficiency in front of hundreds of people all the time. And it's an academic class with standards and competencies. And so I, as a music teacher, I get concerned when I hear there's other opportunities that might take kids away from this academic experience. And so it's, I'm happy to hear that that's not happening, but at the same time, that's, it's tough. It's in the middle school schedule, it's tough anyway to schedule band and chorus because it affects so many kids. But I would hate for those students to miss out on, say, other opportunities because they have this class that they're taking. You know, it almost seems to me like this class should be built in with other classes, not during a time where kids are at the rest of the building or is able to explore. And, you know, I assume some of these music kids also have to get extra help sometimes. Do they get opportunities to do that? Are they now supposed to stay after school to do that as opposed to these other students who don't have to do that? So I'm just always looking out for my music people. So those would just be my concerns about that. But I mean, I love all the opportunities for all those kids, but I feel like band and chorus kids are probably going to miss out on that, and it's a lot of kids that go through that, so.
I did, I agreed with you. I put that down as a question, and I think that's something we can explore down the road. Because I do, was one of those students that if I didn't have nine class periods, I wouldn't have been able to always be in choir every year. And our school does the same thing with flex for the same reason. And I, but I do want to say this, I love, love the amount of opportunities with our goals educators to be, you know, instill in our students to be lifelong learners, so many opportunities where they're learning and they don't even know that they're learning. I mean, Jocelyn, your experience of being on camera and editing and all of those things, there's so many things you can do with that down the road, no matter what you choose to do. And so you learn things that weren't, you know, a grade or homework or those kinds of things. So I really, really love that. And I, again, echo the same things about the number of opportunities that students can choose. And the quarterly choice, that's awesome. I know it's tough. I know it's hard doing random selection and all of those kinds of things with children ranking their choices. I know how hard that is. But being able to select by quarter, I think, is outstanding, instead of them being locked in for a year or a whole semester in one of those areas. And heaven forbid that they don't like something. You know, they can, they've experienced something, they know they don't like it, now they can change. So I do like that. And I want to thank you for bringing Jocelyn and Mr. Costa for your working with the team. You did great.
Thank you. My, I was just going to say, I think it's so important that, especially in middle school, students are engaged, and this is such a great opportunity for all kids to find their passion and to be engaged in school. So I, everything everyone said, and just that two cents at the end. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you for coming. All right. Is there any other new business? All right. Then we will move on to policies, student behavior, conduct, discipline, and due process. Mr. Olson.
Yes. Several months ago, we had a professional development, actually a full-day professional development from our legal counsel that was focused on this particular policy. Attorney Egger explained to us that, you know, discipline for years has been pretty much developed as a local option with various choices and consequences. Now it is ruled more by statute from the state, and there is no policy that is perfect in its content and its execution. This particular policy articulates the expectations for student behavior, indicates that we need to have in-school supports, which we do. We do an excellent job at that in Merrimack. The fact that there need to be graduated discipline consequences as a result of various behaviors, that there are standards or criteria for what constitutes a short-term suspension or longer-term suspension. And there needs to be some, certainly some degree of due process. That is constitutional right that not only applies to us in daily life, but also in this particular policy. Now, the policy has various categories of suspension. One to ten days is considered short-term, eleven to twenty, long-term. With the approval of school superintendent, school district superintendent, that suspension could extend beyond twenty days. There are definitions or criteria for what constitutes expulsion also of a student. None of it is, most of it, I should say, is not new to school districts. It's just codified in terms of a state policy. And here's where I think it's important to understand that a little bit of common sense goes a long way in terms of working with children, working with families, that, you know, this might define what constitutes a behavior that is subject to a short-term suspension or a long-term suspension. But there might be some underlying reasons for a particular behavior by a student that I think is important for us to know and to understand and apply to the disciplinary process. There has to be some reason and rationality to this. One of the people who is helping us immensely across the district in disciplinary issues is Fern Sidon, our director of student wellness. Fern is very much engaged with the principals, with the rest of us, with myself, with Heather Barker, with Kim, on what constitutes a discipline that is appropriate for the particular infraction by a student. I'm going a little bit slow here because I want to make sure we understand that this policy might say X, and we may say in terms of the implementation of any discipline, we don't want to go to that length right now. Okay? I want our staff and our administrators to believe in every student, to know that sometimes there are underlying reasons why students conduct themselves the way they do, or that's why. With the, with the short-term suspension criteria in this policy, as you know, and it's been a subject of discussion, there is no appeals process. One of the reasons, I think, as Attorney Egger has specified to us, is that we could potentially be tied up every week having a board meeting to hear appeals of short-term suspensions. But I did think it was worthwhile to insert some language in there, which I have done on pages seven and eight, that states, after the sentence, a suspension of five days or fewer is not appealable. And it also applies to six to ten because both categories are considered short-term suspensions. I thought it was important to include this statement, that a suspension of five days or fewer is not appealable. However, the administrator is encouraged to speak with the student's parents or legal guardians to determine if there is an underlying reason that may have contributed to the suspendable offense. Based on this conversation, the administrators may decide to alter the length of a suspension, may not, may decide not to suspend a child. You know, there are things that happen in neighborhoods that have a carryover into the school environment. There are things that happen at bus stops, dealt with those types of issues for many, many years, or on school buses, not specifically on school property, but they do have a carryover effect that impacts the behavior and interaction between students. So I guess what I'm trying to say in many words is that this policy can say one thing. But here's where we need to overlay a little bit of social, emotional understanding, some understanding of where a child is coming from. Are there some underlying circumstances that are creating either some bullying or an outburst against another student? So it does define the various categories of what we need to do, or, you know, what behavioral patterns constitute short-term suspension, longer-term suspension, expulsion, which is certainly a much more serious category. But we will never abandon the constitutional right of due process, and we want to be fair and understanding and take a more restorative approach to discipline. I mean, we had professional development on that for the last couple of years, to really move away from penalizing a student to helping a student understand-- a student, to helping a student understand, you know, what consequences, potential consequences of behavior might be. And so with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to you for any questions. I mean, I may not be able to answer all the questions because it's, you know, the, the criteria, the consequences are all outlined here. And, but I think, I think by adding those statements on the short-term suspension, we've given ourselves more latitude to be a little bit more understanding of students in terms of administration of suspension as a discipline. So with that, I will stop talking.
So, thank you. So I think that we did get some clarity on the RSA, and we did get legal opinion. And I think the board was very concerned, and we spoke last time about just the importance of due process, and also for leaving, you know, parents with a voice. And, you know, the research on the objectives of school, school discipline is, you know, we really want kids engaged in school. And yes, there has to be consequences, and there has to be fair consequences and consistent consequences for student behavior. But when we build positive school climates, we have tiered levels of behavior interventions that we follow. There's a lot of collaboration of the school leaders, and, and parents feel that they have a, you know, it's, it's, it's a stool with three legs, and parents are one of those legs on that stool. There's a lot of complex issues underlying school discipline. And I think that as a board, it's going to be important for us to ask for some data, like how many, how many middle schoolers were suspended last year? How many high schoolers? How many students were suspended for five days? How many students were suspended for 10 days? How many students had a 10 plus 10 day? And most likely that was for an assault or a weapon or, and so when we start to look at the data, we can start to understand what's happening in our schools more. But I do appreciate, Bill, that you went back and you put that piece in there because it, it goes back to parents being able to say, you know what, Johnny's grandmother died two days ago. And so this is, he, so this is what happened, and I know you don't happen, and I know this is your concrete sequential, and that's a level three offense, and it's a five-day suspension, but I didn't have that piece of information. So maybe we can hold some days in abeyance, and we can work this out. I, I, I think that's a fair compromise, because it's really a legal issue, and it's an RSA, and it's a state rep issue. It's not a school board issue at this point because somebody made this a legal law.
I actually feel, so I have, I, I did a, another New Hampshire School Board Association workshop last week about policy creation, which I felt was really timely. And I have a lot of notes from that. And one of the things with respect to this is, I'm wondering overall if we as a board have a policy strategy in general. Do we have a process? Do we, are we organized in the way we approach our policy creation? Because some of the issues with this particular line in this particular policy is that we want to make sure that parents aren't shut out of the process. And this is possibly something that could be reflected in other policies. And how do the policies work together as a whole? And, and this is something that I was going to bring up in our goals meeting, because I feel like this is kind of a, like, a district vision sort of thing that I feel like we need to be talking about as a board. But I think, I think we really need to look at all the pieces of the whole, and how do they go together, and how do they interact? And perhaps, you know, we need this hard and fast discipline policy here, but then over here, we have the, you know, I'm, I'm making things up. I have no idea if this is applicable with laws and whatever. We, you know, somewhere else, we have a, these are, these are the parents' rights, and these are the students' rights, and these are the, you know, this, these are our, our channels of communication that are open to you if something happens that you disagree with. So it's not necessarily an appeal of a suspension, but like a, what do I do when I'm lost, and I don't know what's going on, and my kid needs help? How, how, how are we approaching that? Do we have that? And I've been reading through some of our policies on the website in general, but it's, it's a project. So I've only done a few. So if that exists, I haven't got to it yet. But that's kind of my thoughts on this, is that, yes, we need this in place. And I do like, I do like that change. I do think it's a step in the right direction. But do we need to be kind of looking deeper and looking more holistically?
May I just, to address something that you said, Naomi, I also had on my notes to address during the goal-setting meeting, the fact that I think we need a formal policy subcommittee.
Yes.
That can take a more in-depth look at not only new policies, but update our existing policies to make sure that we comply with federal and state statutes in all regards. So that's something that I think we need to put in place for this upcoming school year.
Which goes to what I was going to-
That was on my list, too.
Is, it's a collaboration. So there will be board leadership, there will be multiple people on a subcommittee like that. And one of the things that is wonderful with working with our district leadership is they usually get those notifications of RSAs before we as board members do, or even before NHSBA notifies us. And so it's that collaboration that we work together and that, that spirit of, of togetherness that helps us get these policies formed. The reason this policy is on the books is because it needed changing. The reason our handbooks are up for revision is because they haven't been revised in 12 years. That's where some of those things are that you're, you're asking about. And you're absolutely right. Those things need to be regularly visited.
Yeah. So I, again, I, the policy committee is a fabulous idea. And I do like the language that Bill had put in here. And just kind of going back to what you were saying, and because it's, it's, I think it's easy to look at how it's written and, and get scared because it's, it's very literally black and white. And it doesn't seem like there's wiggle room here. But I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this, this suspension is the final step. It's the last step in that, in that process. And I, I like to think and hope that parents have been involved in every step up until, even including that point. So kind of going back, again, what you were saying is, it's easy to look at that and get a little scared of it. But just to know that every, all the three legs of the stool are involved in the entire process, if it ever does in fact get to that point. So I think that's an important thing to remember.
Jenna.
So I think the important thing, and this piggybacks on what you just said, is, you know, Merrimack, under the guidance of Fern, has been implementing MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. So for the thousands of people who watch these meetings at home, let me explain what that is. Because, you know, really, even myself, even a couple of years ago, I probably didn't know. Now I landed myself in a role where this is what I do. Multi-tiered systems of support means that we provide support to students when and where they need it. So tier one is all kids. All kids get certain supports. For example, the behavior stickers you see that go through the wash and then never, never come off your kids' clothes. Those are tier one. Everybody, you know, learns about respect and responsibility and safety. Or our, our second step curriculum for SEL, all kids get those. All kids get these certain supports that help them be successful in school, both academically and social, socially and emotionally. Tier two is where educators and, you know, district staff identify kids who need a next level of support, whether it be academically or socially or emotionally. And they, and they come together around a table, and they think about what supports need to be in place for these kids. And they put those in place. And that is a preventative sort of thing. Hey, we see some red flags, we're going to jump in, we're going to, we're going to provide these supports, whatever they may be. And they can be as easy as a check-in, check-out. You know, we're going to have the student check in with this trusted adult every day, and then check out at the end of the day, work on some specific goals, a lot of times around behavior. This kid is having multiple bus issues. We're going to have them check in in the morning, after they get off the bus, how'd it go? We're going to have them check in before they get on the bus on the way home, and they're all jacked up. And we're going to see if we can solve these bus issues. And a lot of times that does it, so that we never even get to the point of looking at this kind of thing. And tier three is, is the next level of support. You know, if you think of it as a pyramid, you know, widest at the bottom and at the top. So yes, we legally have to have this. But Merrimack is very proactive at putting in supports and creating interventions at all these different tiers for all students, and then for students who need extra and even a little bit more, so that we don't have to come to this, so that we're, you know, we're solving the bus issues before it gets to the point where we have to suspend a kid. We're solving the recess issues before it ends up in a fight, that sort of thing. So when we talk about Fern Sidon and what she does, it connects very strongly to what this is and how we have this second step program and the way that we're putting these supports in. It's so that, yes, we have this policy, yes, it's there if we need it. But it's not our, it's not the gun we're going and blazing with. That's a terrible metaphor for a school board member, but you know what I'm saying. It's not the thing that we're like, hey, well, let's see what the thing says. You know, we've put our heads together. If it comes to this, a lot of things have, have happened. And I think that's important for people to know, because there should be parental involvement long before it ever gets to this situation.
And I'm going to piggyback on what you're saying to, right on the bottom of page six, after the list of the standards for short-term suspension, it states, "In addition, school administrators shall have the discretion to refrain from issuing a suspension when they determine that student conduct may be remediated through in-school supports and/or a lesser consequence." And then it says, "In considering the length of the suspension, school administrators shall consider the following things." So I think it's important for everyone in the public to understand exactly what Jenna was saying. There is a long set of conversations and support that happen before an administrator does a suspension. Because as we know, suspending a student creates more havoc when they come back with academics and more behavior and more supports and those kinds of things. So it, sometimes it's a wake-up call for a student, but it is something we don't want to use lightly. I do have one question, though. In that process, where would a manifestation determination happen?
That's very important. Under the IDEA legislation, we don't just universally administer discipline to a student who was, who was on an IEP. And we always have to understand whether or not the student's behavior is a fact, in fact, a manifestation of the student's behavior. And so that, that really brings an entirely new perspective to any type of disciplinary process. And so we're very cognizant of that. Here's where our special education director, Heather Barker, is excellent in providing advice to all of us. What we're going to do to, to address issues such as that, Lori, is we are going to have our attorney who specializes in civil rights and special education issues meet with us about three or four times during the year, the leadership team, so that we can always be updated, we can always be refreshed in terms of the procedures that we go through, what we're allowed to do, what we're not allowed to do, what represents common sense, and when do we apply certainly kindness, caring, understanding to the discipline process and not use this as the automatic default mechanism.
So I just want to circle back. So I do think it's really good information for the board. If we had a report, you know, I think, you know, on the number of suspensions, on the reasons for the suspensions, on the number of special ed students that were suspended, you know, how many of our suspensions were reported to the Merrimack Police Department or to the SRO versus they were handled just by the school district? I think all that's critical information.
Kimberly.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge that all public schools are required to fill a report at the end of the year to the state. That gives the number of suspensions and-
Yes.
The ethnicity and of the, a child and what they were suspended for, identify if it was, you know, for possession of a weapon or et cetera, et cetera. So that data will be easy, and it's timely that you ask for it because it's due.
Right. I think it's-
Right.
It's due in July, so you have to do that work anyway.
Yeah. So we can get that for you.
However, this discussion has been wonderful, lots of great suggestions, but I do know that you need a motion.
Yes.
So I would be happy to make a motion to approve the student behavior, conduct, discipline, and due process policy as presented with the corrections tonight.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Five zero zero. All right. Moving on to approval of the minutes, May 21st, 2022, public minutes. We had suspended voting on this before. We know Naomi had a concern, and I would like to entertain a motion to accept them with the revision.
Oh, yeah, I'm just going to say the revision out loud. Should I do that before or after the motion?
Yes, go ahead.
So the, they reviewed the recording of that meeting for clarification, and they changed lines 177 and 178 to, "Board member Halter asked if it made sense to have an affirmative policy protecting the ability to wear masks," which is, reflects what I said. So.
Yes, thank you.
And I will move to accept those minutes.
Do I have a second?
Sure. I'll second.
Seconded by Ken. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes five zero zero. All right. Non-public minutes from June 6th. I'll entertain a motion to accept those.
I'll just make a motion.
Moved by Chairman Rothaus, seconded by Naomi Halter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five. All those against? All those abstained? Four zero one. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. We have some educator resignations to announce. We have Michaela Ramsdale, a math teacher from Merrimack High School, Danielle Jordan, science teacher from Merrimack Middle School, Zoe Swalge, language arts teacher from Merrimack Middle School, Jace LaBary, math teacher at Merrimack Middle School, and Anders Benson, music teacher at JMU's. We also have some nominations to put forward. For as a phys ed teacher at James Mastercola Upper Elementary School, we nominate Ryan Berry. James Mastercola Upper Elementary School, grade six teacher, Heather Niebel. Merrimack High School, phys ed teacher, Amber Murphy. Merrimack Middle School, world language teacher, Deborah Bass. James Mastercola Upper Elementary School, phys ed teacher, Matthew Zopa. And Reed's Ferry School, special ed teacher, Danielle Long. And we have one administrator nomination, and that is for Brooke Ross to become the assistant principal at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School.
An administrator renewals? The renewals on part of the consent agenda?
Yes. And we are proposing certainly the administrative renewals of our principals, assistant principals, and central office administrators.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Sure.
Moved by Jenna Hardy, seconded by Chairman Rothaus. All those in favor? Say aye. Passes five zero zero.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on to other committee reports.
I have a committee report.
Oh, go ahead.
I went to the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting on June 15th. They had a bunch of announcements about things that are happening this summer that I figure are of interest to families with children. So I'm going to read a whole list. They're just about ready to open Camp, Camp Natticook next week, and they're looking for a couple of more staff people. And that's a 40-hour-a-week mid, Monday through Friday job. They're looking for a kitchen assistant, one more lifeguard, and somebody to do maintenance. So if anyone's looking for a summer job. They also have an open spot on the Parks and Rec Committee if anyone's interested in volunteering to their time to help the community. They have one full-time position open and one alternate. If you go to the town website, there's a get involved button, and there's a form they can, you can fill out if you're interested. The summer movie series is coming this summer again at Wasserman Park. They're showing Spider-Man, whatever the new Spider-Man movie is, I didn't write down the subtext, on July 23rd. And then on September 3rd, September 3rd, that must be August 3rd. I wrote it down wrong. Okay. The notes from my meeting say September 3rd. September 3rd, they're showing Sing Two. Okay, the notes from my meeting say September 3rd. September 3rd, they're showing Sing Two. The summer concert series at Abbey Griffin Park kicks off this Wednesday at 6:00 PM. They're having concerts every Wednesday night. This week is, it's Ben Rudnick and Friends. I guess it's a family sort of performance, so folks might be interested in that. And then the July 4th festivities, there's a patriotic concert the night before on July 3rd. On the morning on July 4th, there's the Sparkler 5K that benefits the middle school and high school track and cross-country teams. Their Rotary is doing their pancake breakfast. The parade, as we mentioned earlier, is going to be at 1:00, and they're doing fireworks at 9:00. The Rotary is not doing the Family Fun Day that they've done in the past with all the bounce houses and stuff. So that's what happened at the Parks and Rec meeting.
Thank you. Jenna.
I'm here to report that I missed the CIA meeting. In true humility, I had it on my calendar. I had everything ready to go. Life went sideways, and then I looked at the clock and thought, I missed it. So I'm reporting that I failed last week, and I shall report back when I get the minutes.
Thank you for your honesty. All right, correspondence.
So I had a correspondence about graduation being exceptional. Correspondence about the discipline policy and concerns about parents' rights. And then a correspondence about naming a facility or naming something in the MRMAC School District. And just so everyone knows that if you have a group of people that would like to name something, the Planning and Building Committee is the one that makes the recommendation to the board. So there is a name application, then there's a meeting with them, and then they make, you know, a recommendation like, all right, maybe we're not going to name this classroom this, but, you know, in the past, we've named a bench, so we'll, you know, they try. They're the ones that it's their job to make the recommendation to us. That happened a long time ago, so the board didn't get, you know, have one more job. So let that team make the, you know, meet with everyone, make the recommendation to the board, and then we can accept it. So that's how that works. That's it.
Board comments.
Sorry, I'm actually going back to, to.
Correspondence?
Yep.
Correspondence.
I think we all got the person, the clean energy advocate email about clean school bus rebates available.
All right, now comments. Jenna.
Well, I also have comments. Couple things. First of all, I want to commend MRMAC TV. They so often, you know, are like the grass in town, right? Like, you just don't notice what they do, but what they do is so ingrained in so much of what goes on in our town, and especially with our school district, that we forget what they do. First of all, everybody's able to sit at home and not have to sit here because of MRMAC TV and the work that they do. I think they were also just kind of left, it was, we didn't mention during the presentation about graduation that they were live-streaming the graduation. The whole time, I'm sitting, you know, two feet from Nick, who I can hear, you know, calling the shots and doing the things. And all the things he did behind the scenes to really make sure. He and his team are fantastic, and they do what they do on a very tight budget provided by the town. And not only that, and I want to say this publicly, is they are so open to participation from the community. If you want to volunteer, if you want to get involved, if your child has an interest in becoming involved, they are willing to work with you, and they love having people in there. I know that from personal experience. So I just want to commend them for the great job they do. And I loved hearing tonight that they donated, you know, computers for the middle school, the MRMAC Middle School TV program. And that's so awesome, and it allows those, the funds that we as TAC that go to the MRMAC TV then now continues on to go to the middle school, and I think that is fantastic. And the whole team there, their mentorship and their generosity with what they do. They work really long hours, and they do a really good job. So I just want to thank and commend them. My second comment is graduation was absolutely phenomenal. It was so nice to be back to a regular graduation. Having been a parent of a senior during one of the two weird COVID graduations, which I happen to be in the less weird COVID graduation, but still, it was really great to be back. But somebody made the observation that normally there are seats on the field for graduation. I think there was an explanation about why there wasn't. But other than the last, this last week, and then when my son graduated, the last time I was at a MRMAC High School graduation was back in the 1900s, when my sister graduated from high school. And I don't really remember. But somebody mentioned to me that normally there were cheers on the field. And the only reason that I'm mentioning it here is because I wonder if we should look back because I saw a lot of people standing. I think I mentioned to you, Kim, like, we still have a lot of people. There were a lot, and then there were stacks of chairs. And so I thought to myself, is there a way that we could have created more seating? Is that something we've done in the past? Was there a reason it wasn't done? Oh, he's getting his microphone ready. He has an answer for me, does he?
Well, per fire code, there's only allowed 200 chairs. So the chairs that you saw stacked were rogue chairs that we had placed on the field that were deemed not appropriate per the local fire code.
Well, that answers my question.
That answers your question.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the school board?
I would like to also add that I thought graduation was outstanding, loved that it was not hot. And the students really do deserve to be commended for their behavior, for their enthusiasm, for the way they cheered each other on. You could tell they had great class spirit. The whole team did an outstanding job of putting it together. And the maintenance crew made it look beautiful. Everything was great. The tents stayed still and didn't blow away, which was wonderful. And it was just a wonderful day all the way around. I also want to thank our families. This has been, you know, year number three, really, school year number three. That's been tough. And it's getting better. Every year seems to be getting a little better. But I just want to thank the families for their engagement, for their participation in their kids' schools with the board. And, you know, we had a tough year, but we came together. We're looking forward to the future. I encourage everyone to take some time this summer to breathe and enjoy life because we have an awesome, awesome community. And no matter what's happening in our world, we do have this wonderful place that we live in and this wonderful community, and we can hold on to that in the midst of anything. And we have come through a lot. Didn't always agree, but we all came together. And I want to thank our community and our parents and our students, everyone sitting at this table, and our faculty and staff for the way we've come together this year.
All right, well, then we will move on to, do you have something to say?
Okay.
No, I'm, you, I'm not following that. Public comments on agenda items.
So I have a bad case of bronchitis and laryngitis, but I'll keep my comments brief because I don't have a voice. But I did want to come out and just. Oh, I'm sorry, Cindy Gualyumi, 22 ministerial. I did want to come out and thank three of our administrators in particular. So Kim Yarlet, you know, wish her the best and thank her for all of her service. You know, I first came in contact with her as a parent, you know, when my oldest now graduated, first came into the district. And I remember she helped me through some difficult decisions. The most difficult one being with my younger child. Should I, he was close to the cutoff date. Should I put him in? Should I hold him back? Still remains one of my most difficult decisions. But, and for everything else, my prior experience on budget committee, school board, I've had many interactions with her, always extremely professional. I also want to thank Peter Bergeron, wish him the best for his retirement. That man, parents love him, students love him. He looks out for students all the time. His ability to observe, his emotional intelligence, and the way that he works with students is so incredible. So I want to wish him the best for his retirement. And Marsha McGil, I mean, she has worked in this district year in and year out. She works with kids at the most pivotal age, that hard age of when everybody comes together. I think there's very few people that have had that length of service in this district as Marsha. She touches more than you know. She mentors staff, administrators, and certainly want to wish her the best for her retirement as well. Similarly, all other staff and teachers that have given so much that are retiring this year, I want to thank them as well. And I truly wish them the best for their retirement. Thank you all. It's been a great meeting, and I hope you have a good summer.
Hi, still Heather Robitaille, 45 Springfield Circle. I just wanted to thank the board for the conversation that you had around the discipline policy, for sharing your thoughts and for questioning one another, for sharing FERN's involvement and the social-emotional piece. Because as we know, the more supports we can provide to our students, the more tools we can give them throughout the process, we can prevent larger issues and situations. So as a parent, I'm definitely comforted to hear that. The other piece that just sticks in my mind is while no policy is ever perfect, and I appreciate the intention behind it, as all of us move on and may or may not be in this room in years to come, we want to make sure that what is written when the next generation, board, administration receives that policy, that that intent is clear and just documented as well. So thank you, thank you, like Cindy said, to all our educators, and have a very well-earned summer break.
With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Ken, seconded by Jenna. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes five zero zero. Thank you and good night.